Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Here.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
First is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, March 16th, 2009. Second? Okay, motion by Stevenson, seconded by Barnes, any discussion?
I'd like to make a small correction on the elected appointed officials physically present. As much as I like to follow in the footsteps of Danielle, I don't happen to be an older woman. I wouldn't mind seeing that corrected.
We can do that.
It's probably cheaper to do it here than otherwise.
Yes, yes, right. Okay, anything else? All those in favor of the minutes as corrected, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, under petitions and communications, we do have on the agenda a presentation from Carl. Dr. Leonard is here to present that, and then later we will have the people who have filled out the cards that want to testify to whatever issue they're concerned with.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the council's time, community's time. We were here last year and want to keep everyone updated about Carl Foundation, what's happening at the hospital, and we take the opportunity each year at this time as we prepare our community benefit report to use that as the springboard for this discussion. And I realize I have about 15 minutes and would like to take you through our slideshow, and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions as we make our way along. Starting out in the community benefit arena, what you have in front of you is the report that goes into the state of Illinois, and you see significant numbers and a significant increase in the percentages over the last few years. We use a national format of how the numbers are submitted. You can see a number of different breakdown areas, and you see that we're well over $80 million, and we do this year on year the same way so that it is comparable. When you look at the breakdown of fiscal year 2008 in the community benefit dollars, what you see that really jumps out is almost $10 million in what we call community care or charity care. You see big numbers in the uncompensated arena that falls into bad debt, and very bothersome is over $48 million in unpaid costs in Medicaid and Medicare, not insignificant dollars to each and every one of us. Currently, the state of Illinois owes Carl Foundation about $19 million in Medicaid delayed payments. Those payments, once received, will still be about 5.5 million below the cost of the services provided, and so everything that we give you is based on the actual cost to us. The corporate contribution area includes cash donations that have been made, community service, in-kind gifts. The community health number of over $13 million includes research, workforce development. We have a major educational program in both graduate and medical education. We know that as GME residencies, training of doctors, as well as CME, which is continuing medical education. So, not insignificant in terms of where the dollars go, and I think very interesting in terms of the breakdown of those dollars. Our community care discount program, we like to talk about because quite frankly, we're very proud of it. As we have looked at that program over the last nine years, there were a number of debates going on, there still are, about community care programs, and you can be proud that Carl Foundation Hospital really leads the nation in the type of program that we've put together. And what you see in the close to $10 million is the dollar figure, but then you look at the other numbers, the number of patients over 5,000 that have benefited, the number of people registered over 6,000. When you look at the actual intricacies of the program, how there's no cost healthcare at Carl Foundation Hospital to people with incomes of 200% of the federal poverty guidelines. For a family of four, that equates to $42,000 as their income level. We have sliding scale discounts for up to 300% of the poverty guidelines, and we have actually capped expenses at 40% of a patient's gross annual income, up to 400% of the poverty line. So, we have really made what we think significant changes, improvements, and are very sensitive to the issues of payments and healthcare and how it can affect people in our community, and we too are members of that community, so we think it's very important. This slide is just to give you a sense of where we're at regarding property taxes. It's an ongoing issue for us. In the blue is the additional property taxes that we have paid under protest, and to give you a sense in proportion how that compares to charity care and how our charity care contribution has changed in a much greater percentage than the property taxes under protest. And now for what I think is the important part of our discussion, and quite frankly, that's about our community, that's about the members of our community, the programs that are there. Talk a little bit about what we've done very specifically, and talk about some things that I think you can be very proud of because healthcare is very important, I think, as a backbone to any community that's vibrant and wants to grow. We have specific senior impact projects during the last fiscal year where close to $600,000 were distributed in the community. We looked at six key areas. We actually set out a community focus group to help us make sure that we hit what was needed, that it wasn't just our opinion or our thoughts about where those dollars could have the most benefit, and so you see that we focused on transportation, medication management, dental care is huge. There's a huge need in this community for dental care for all ages, and so a number of the dollars were put into those areas as well as some of the others that you can see on the slides in front of you. Emergency preparedness. You know, at the end of the day, you look to us to make sure that the healthcare that is available in this community, when you need it, is there, and I take that very seriously, and part of that is emergency preparedness. God forbid that something happened, that we have some type of disaster in this community, but if so, are we ready and can we essentially carry the water and make sure that we're prepared ahead of time and can do the best job possible to make sure that our citizens get the care that they deserve and will need at that time. We've been very involved in what's called the POD Hospital, which is a state designation that we are the primary hospital for 21 county area. When there are disasters, essentially, in that 21 county area, Carl Foundation sets up an emergency center right in our boardroom and takes control of all of the hospitals in that region, all of the hospital beds, to try and determine how those beds are used, what type of services are available to make sure that the entire needs of that entire area, of this entire region are being met as best we can, of course, in pretty difficult circumstances. We've also brought money into the community through grants, over $800,000, to assist us in making sure that we are as prepared as possible. We use that grant money for training, for supplies, for education. You can see on the slides the supplies on hand that we keep, as well as the facility that's now available for disaster victims. I think there are some general operating statistics that are very interesting, and I know as members of the community, as well as leaders of the community, that these are very important to you. We serve a population of over 1.26 million people. There's been a little bit of growth, maybe not as much as in some areas, but year on year, almost 1%. Our average daily census, we have a very healthy hospital. As you read the newspapers, you see where a lot of hospitals are seeing decreases in their census. Our census has grown over the last year, year on year, by 5.2%. That means a number of things. It's good that we're able to meet that need, it supplies a lot of new jobs, it does represent a healthcare system that is under extremis throughout the area. As agriculture struggles, as different economic forces come into play, as there aren't enough nurses, as there are not enough doctors, many patients are being transferred to Urbana, Carl Foundation Hospital, to receive care particularly on the weekends, many times at night, because those other safety nets aren't quite as firm as they used to be. And so that is part of the growth, but it's very fortunate that we're there and that we are able to supply that type of care and support. And that only happens with a lot of cooperation from our friends at Parkland College, as we're involved in nursing training, as we're successful in recruiting physicians to our medical staff, and many, many others are involved. Inpatient admissions are over 19,000 at this point in time, which often surprises people, and then when we get to the emergency department statistics, that we see over 55,000 people a year in the emergency room is a staggering number for a lot of people. I mean, that's an inner-city kind of number where you see that many people coming through the emergency room, and there's no small task managing that. Our employees are up over 3,000, and you see other statistics that go along with that, our dollars spent with local vendors, 7% growth, payroll and benefits over $160 million in our last fiscal year, which grew by 5.1%, our capital investment, and then our size on a net patient revenue basis of over $430 million. The ripple effect on the economy, I think you're all aware how important healthcare is. I would point out to you how one job creates 2.2 jobs. When you take 3,000 people, the math again begins to grow in terms of the impact, very positively, that healthcare and particularly Carl Foundation has on the community. You then see the multipliers from the Busey presentation and other statistics along that line. As a physician, I'm very proud of this slide, and I think that you can be too. A year and a half ago, we started out on a project around something called mortality rates. And a mortality rate, quite simply, as I explain it to our board and to members of our foundation, where there are many laypeople, is all about you walk in alive, you walk out alive. And I think that is a very important statistic for a hospital to not only be aware of, but to make that number as low as possible. When you look at how mortality ratios are done, a number of 1 is expected, okay? That's based on a patient's severity, what was wrong with them, and so 1 is average. Above 1 is not so good. Below 1 is where you want to be. That means people are walking out that weren't necessarily expected to walk out. And what you see in our mortality data is, we said we wanted it below 1, and it's not a statistic, believe it or not, that is easily available in the United States today, but people are beginning to measure it more. In FY08, we were able to achieve .71, which is very good, and I'm proud to say as we sit here today, it's .66. And my goal is to continue to drive that down, and it should be your goal as well. Other achievements in the clinical area, the Da Vinci surgical system is now at Carl Foundation Hospital, otherwise known as the Robot, so we have robotic surgery that is available. Our customer service scores, which is a reflection of your friends and neighbors and the people that work at Carl Foundation, are some of the highest we've ever had and have been at times in the top 10% in the country, and we're very proud of that. I think it's a reflection of the healthy environment that can do attitude of the people in our hospital. An EMR is shorthand for electronic medical record, and a lot of times, there's the feeling of, oh, just put in the software and turn it on, and everybody will use it. Here to tell you, for those of you who haven't experienced putting in an electronic medical record in a complex system, it's quite a challenge. We're two years into the journey, and the good news is, it is instituted throughout the hospital at this point, and has been instituted so that the services available around ordering, to decrease errors around notes, is in the top 10% of the country in terms of its capability. We talk a lot about it. Most hospitals have not been successful in putting it into the degree that it's available at Carl Foundation Hospital. Our research program, which is very tightly wed to the University of Illinois, we've invested over $7 million in translational research, we've begun a tissue repository. We're very excited by many of the projects that are going on at this point in time, and I could spend all of my time talking about that, so I'll move on. Other achievements, many of you were able to attend the Mills Breast Cancer Institute Open House, a fantastic facility that represents our community well. Our biomedical research center, we're in the process of opening up a digestive health center on our first floor, which is very exciting. We've added a new helipad so that the helicopter can carry more weight, which is very important in terms of being able to transport patients and the equipment that's often necessary. And soon, the ECHO building will be opening, which is our cochlear implant patients, where we also have our Carl Auditory School. Many are not aware that for years, we've had a school for children with hearing impairments that get cochlear implants, and we've just been able, through a lot of assistance and budgetary planning on our part, to move ahead with a new school and facilities for them. Our Heart and Vascular Institute, unfortunately, the first bullet, as you well know, has been put on hold. The capital markets have made it extremely difficult to be able to access $236 million. I very much hope that the story will change during 2009. From what I just heard from Charlie, it may be a little bit longer than that before things unfreeze, but as soon as possible, we want to move ahead with the Heart and Vascular Institute. We think it's important regarding recruitment and the facilities to modernize them and make them as contemporary as possible. But while we wait, while we plan, good things regarding our health grades in the nation for cardiology and stroke being in the top 10%, our chest pain designation, for those of you who read the Chicago Tribune in the last couple of weeks, you're aware that Carl Foundation Hospital is one of the top five in the state for what they call door-to-dilation. If you begin to have chest pain and it's due to a heart attack, you want to live in our service area because our door-to-dilation is under 90 minutes, in fact, 72 is our average. That saves myocardium, which saves lives. That's a process that has been put in place over the past year and a half and is a tremendous team project where instead of the old way where one thing would happen, the next thing would happen, multiple things happen in parallel, which allows the patient to be taken to the catheter for catheterization in possible stents, excuse me, in 72 minutes. We're very proud of everything that we've accomplished. We can't do it alone. It takes cooperation of the community, the citizens, all of our staff. You've been very generous in your support. We always have things that we can do better, and I very much appreciate that, and I very much appreciate the time that you've given me tonight to tell a little bit about our story. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You talked about 21 counties. Do you serve anybody in Indiana, and can you tell us what roughly your geographic scope is? Do you go up to Kankakee County, or up to Cook, or what?
Really, if you think about it, it's about a 50-mile radius is the best way to think about it. Now, that's not perfect because that balloon bulges out particularly when you go south a little bit further, and then comes in a little bit as you go north and west. So, that's the region. You do not go in Indiana, and you don't go all the way up to Kankakee.
Okay. Charlie?
Thank you, Dr. Leonard. Quick one, how do you get to the 500 victim number? Why does, where does that number come from? You know, you can provide care to 500 victims simultaneously, is that the idea, or?
Are you talking about the emergency?
Yeah, the emergency.
Yes, yes, our ability. When you do disaster preparedness, you have to figure out, okay, quite specifically, is it an airplane? Is it a biomedical problem? And how large a number do you need to be ready to deal with? And 500 is the number that we shoot for. Now, again, a lot of that is also dependent on acuity. A disaster situation, you're doing triage, and so a lot of other factors come into play, but that is the general number we work off of.
Okay, and is that figured out in conjunction with other hospitals, other healthcare providers, fire departments, police?
Everybody works together on that plan, but there are also national templates that you can use. You don't have to do this in isolation to develop what's the best way, what's the plan for, what's your population, what's in your area that might be a target.
Okay, I just think in terms of one dorm, you know, on campus, is more than 500 people, but, so...
Yeah, I mean, you can think of all sorts of scenarios. I mean, pick a basketball game.
Right, as basketball in the stadium, yeah.
Right, and we would be overwhelmed, but you have to pick a certain number and work from there.
Okay. In the event of something overwhelming like that, what do we do? How do we respond? If we do get overwhelmed, do we look to other communities, the federal government?
Yes, you essentially, well, the short answer is yes. You look to other communities. Let me give an example, 9/11. So, I'll flip the example on you. 9/11, when that occurred, Carl Foundation as a POD hospital was on alert and essentially had taken control of all the hospitals in the region as we anticipated the attack on Chicago. So, flipped it the other way, knowing Chicago would be overwhelmed, we were ready to receive additional injured people, and the same thing would happen, and you see that sort of movement throughout the state with planning.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis Roberts?
Yeah, hi. One of the things you pointed out is that you have a 21-county distribution of a service, and then you also said you had 1.25 million citizens that you serve, and I was wondering if that was based on the population in those counties, or is that figure relates to the number of clients that potentially you have that are served by Carl Hospital particularly as a healthcare provider through their managed plans and such?
Realizing the numbers are somewhat different, the first, the 21-county region is our designated region for emergency preparedness, the POD hospital. The 1.25, 2.26 number really comes more from the marketing, where we draw patients from who will come for our services. So, they're really two separate things. Now, the Venn diagrams do overlap quite a bit since the 21 counties are around us, but depending on the service that's available, how high a level it is, a tertiary or quaternary level, we do draw patients from, well, quite frankly, in our NICU and our sickest little babies, we go almost all the way down to Kentucky.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Christopher Alex, you have five minutes. Would you please state your name and address?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Christopher Alex. I live at 301 East George Huff Drive here in Urbana. I don't think I'll take five minutes, but I just wanted to contribute a little bit of perspective to the issue of Lydia Court West. When this case was brought before the Plan Commission, I was a Plan Commissioner at the time, and I know a number of the commissioners at that time raised the issue of the proximity between the Lydia Court West development and the Meyer loading dock. This plan case was brought at the time that Meyer owned the land and had already submitted a site plan, which had been approved, but the Meyer store had not yet been built, and the developer, Lydia Court West, came to the Plan Commission seeking some minor variances, if I remember correctly, related to sidewalks, which were approved. And as a, so during this discussion, this issue of the proximity to Meyer came up, and I think what I said almost verbatim at the time to the developer was, "I certainly hope that you tell these potential buyers of these homes that they're going in behind what's going to be a Meyer store, because otherwise, several years from now, these homeowners are going to be before the city council complaining about noise from the Meyer loading dock." So, I'm not here to say I told you so, especially since no one in the council, I think, was on the council at the time that this happened, but more to express my frustration that this is a scenario that I think was avoidable. Meyer knew that they were building, when they developed their site plan, knew that they were going to be building it immediately adjacent to a residential development. The developer of Lydia Court West knew that they were building immediately behind a Meyer store. You know, the ordinances hadn't changed, the site plans hadn't changed. This was a case of two parties, two developers, walking into this situation with eyes open. And I think if either or both of these developers had done the right thing, so to speak, exercised some additional responsibility in terms of providing buffering or mitigation above and beyond what the ordinance required, we wouldn't be having this problem. So, it's frustrating to me to find out that the city's now proposing to spend taxpayer money to try to mitigate something that I think we all saw coming. That being said, since we can't count on developers to always do the right thing, them being human, this is why we have development ordinances, this is why we have zoning ordinances, this is why we have subdivision ordinance, and in my personal opinion, the degree to which the existing ordinances address conflicts between big box retail stores and residential developments is woefully inadequate. If I can talk briefly about big boxes, at the time that Walmart was proposing their store in Urbana, if you'll remember, if you may or may not remember, that that was actually a request for down zoning, converting from an industrial zoning to retail or business zoning, to enable them to build this big box store. My contention would be that it's not really correct to view a transition from industrial zoning to retail for big box as a down zoning, and I made this case during that plan case. On virtually every metric, traffic count in customers and employees, truck deliveries, noise, lighting, litter, stormwater runoff, there is higher intensity of use in most big box stores than there is in most modern industrial facilities. Yet, most city zoning ordinances still equate big box stores in the same category as, you know, the mom-and-pop grocery, or the soda fountain, or the neighborhood hardware store. These are, in fact, very intense uses, and I think that the Urbana, like most cities, is sort of behind the times in terms of updating our zoning ordinances to recognize the increasing intensity and scale of what we now call retail establishments. So, my request to the council, I guess, would be, I'm not going to oppose seeing the city spend money on this. I understand there are homeowners who are aggrieved, and if I was one of them, I would certainly be appreciative that, Ms. Stevenson, I think that's your ward, and the rest of the council was interested in our situation, but I would ask that if the city is going to spend money on hiring a consultant to essentially tell us that loading docks and residences don't mix, that the results of that study be used by the city to reform the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance in such a way that provides real protection to residential neighbors of current and future big box developments. And that's all I had to say to you tonight.
I want to tell you that that's why we're hiring the consultant, because we want to change our ordinances, because we realize that this should not have happened. I didn't know that you had said these things earlier, but it was clear that this should not have happened, and we want to prevent it from happening in the future. And the consultant that we're hiring is very proficient in this area. He's a specialist on loading docks, and he's also the chair of a committee that sets the standards, and he's local, so we, it's not just for this problem, but it's to prevent it from happening in the future. But I appreciate what you had to say.
And I appreciate that. It wasn't clear from the news coverage on this whether this was an attempt to resolve this particular issue, or whether there was a commitment by the city to address this at the ordinance level.
Well, sometimes you don't get everything you say quoted.
Believe me, I know.
Okay, Heather?
Well, the two big box stores that you referred to are both in my ward. I have spoken with the neighbors and through email, and I know when we set up our goals four years ago through the summer, one of our goals was zoning, and so while we've addressed... And so while we've addressed that in some areas, there's still work to be done. Libby Tyler in community development does a tremendous job. There weren't neighborhood meetings held. And I think, you know, to the degree that things were done properly, I think that there's still work to be done. And I think that, you know, it was something that was done before I was here, but now that I'm the representative of those, of those two, of that ward and those two big box stores, I have talked with neighbors and continue to welcome communications between the neighbors.
That's good to hear. And I wanted to stress, I'm not suggesting that either the Meyer developer or the developer of Lydia Court West, you know, did not comply with the city ordinances. I mean, I think they did everything by the book. My point was simply that we ought to have a bigger book.
Chris, thanks for coming and recalling some of this tale. One question I had was, do you recall that part of the change at Lydia Court West was an upzoning? That there was more of a transition from lower residential to maybe multifamily to the Meyer store use and that there was actually, I'm sorry, a downzoning there to allow those single-family homes to be built so close? Or was the zoning change not part of, part of the history?
I honestly don't remember. I know that that area east, I mean, that entire area was designated, if I remember correctly, as residential. The Meyer rezoning happened before I was on the Plan Commission, and so I'm not, although I'm aware from hearing the stories that there was considerable public concern over the rezoning of that property to accommodate Meyer, I don't remember what the upshot was in terms of the property to the east. I know it was residential before, and it was residential when we were done. I know that the developers came to the Plan Commission seeking some variances in terms of sidewalks and sidewalk placement and street width, which, as you're aware of, are very common requests, which are often accommodated, rightfully so. But I don't recall whether there was actually a rezoning attached to that or not.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Douglas Kistler. The same, would you please say your name and your address? You have five minutes. Thank you.
Douglas Kistler, 214 Hartle Avenue. And I'm commenting on the same topic from a different perspective perhaps, but I know that there's nothing in place to deal with industrial noise, from my experience, because I've dealt with this for years from a different location, which, and I've got emails from you saying that you will address this problem via a consultant, which I assume is the same thing that you're talking about here. And so I want to make, I just want to make sure that it will be, and I'm talking about noise from Solo Cup, which is in my neighborhood, which isn't far away, and I don't know what the consultant, you know, I don't know what, I mean, there's a difference between consulting and actually having something in place to actually deal with a problem, which, like I said, I know there's nothing here to do, to deal with this problem, because I've tried for years. And, but consultants are great, I mean, it's a start, right? I mean, it's a way to start something happening. So I guess I just, I want to make sure that you're not excluding other, that you're just, you're not dealing just with this Meyer problem and that other problems might be dealt with as well.
We've asked him to look at your problem as well. Okay? And we, we're concerned, I mean, we have a lady that came in, she's in the county, and she's worried about a store being built right next to her. So we realize that this is a big problem. It's not just the Meyer thing. And we want our ordinances to be revised to eliminate these conflicts between residential areas and commercial and industrial areas.
Right. And I look at it as, I mean, absolutely a public health issue, you know? Which it is, and a lot of people forget that, you know? And I've had, I mean, Jason Ersmann has been over to my house like dozens of times and taken noise readings out of, way beyond what the EPA limit is allowed in a residential neighborhood, especially at certain times. But, like I said, there's nothing, no way to deal with that. There's nothing. And that's more important, really, than just having a consultant to tell you what the problem is.
Well, we're not just trying to measure the problem, we're also trying to figure out what to do about the problem in both cases. And to prevent these conflicts from happening in the future, that's the point of this.
Right, okay.
Any questions for Mr. Kistler?
I just got the comment.
Sure.
Of course, I've talked to Douglas pretty few times, and I was concerned also that the scope of the consultant's activity would be limited to a specific place and location. And I'm encouraged to hear, Mayor, that you have an intent to have readings done at other locations too. So I hope that does satisfy some of our needs. And I'll speak more to it when we talk about it as an issue.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Cecily Smith.
My name is Cecily Smith. I live at 1404 Westfield Drive in Champaign. I'm a staff person with Prairie Rivers Network, which is a river protection organization in the other town next door. But I'm here as one of the organizing committee members for the Boneyard Creek Community Day, which is coming up April 18th, Saturday. And I just wanted to come and say thank you to the city. We have, as part of our organizing committee, City of Urbana and the Urbana Park District as partners. And this will be the fourth year for the event. We hope to get, meet our record of 400 people and maybe top that, depending on the weather. And I just wanted to mention that it's been, this is my second year on the organizing committee, and it's really been great, just in that short span of time, to see that this event is really evolving into something that's very exciting. All of the partners really believe that it's essential for people to get connected to the urban creeks, for them to really learn to appreciate what they have. And so to have people come out and clean up around the boneyard is really the first step. But there are other ways of getting the message out too, and one of these is through art. And I know that the City of Urbana is really quite supportive of the arts. And I just wanted to mention that this year we'll be having Chad Dunn and his Recycled Rhythms there for music. And we're also going to have Chris Bertie, who is an artist that works in recycled materials. And actually, a lot of what he gets comes out of our creeks. So he's going to have some of his pieces there as well. So we're trying to reach out in different ways to communicate. And as I said, it's an evolving event, and I can't wait to see what happens next year. So thank you again for all your support.
Thank you. Jeannie Covert, is that how you pronounce your name?
Jeannie Covert, I live at 806 South Vine, Urbana. So I'd like to address the city council in regards to the rezoning at 708 South Vine. As property owners within 250 feet of the parcel of land that's being considered for approved rezoning, it is our feeling that rezoning to allow multiple units would not be a good fit in this neighborhood now or in the future. Rezoning from R3, single-one-two family residential to R4, medium-density multiple-family residential, would not be an improvement to this already-dense neighborhood. The history and current of this, current makeup of this area of Urbana supports the current R3 zoning of 708 South Vine. Majority of properties in the 702 to 806 South Vine are single-family homes in keeping with the current zoning map. The same is true of the eastern boundary of this block. South Urbana Street is a very quiet residential area. This block serves as a wonderful transition area between the commercial, high-density area of South Washington and the commercial downtown area north of Oregon. My last argument is that of an emotional sentiment. For many years, my grandmother lived in this neighborhood. Throughout the years, driving along South Vine, I admired many of the homes, especially the one at 806 South Vine. Nearly one year ago, just borrowing a few days, I bought that property, or we bought that property, and immediately started improvements to bring this old house back to life. My concern now is that the neighborhood will become so congested and loud with others that they won't enjoy the drive along South Vine Street. Also, I'm worried that the improvements we've made to our property, especially returning it to a single-family usage, will be overshadowed by the addition of a multifamily unit in the block. The petitioner for the zoning change, Mojo Properties, stated in his application that this approval, or this proposal, is suitable for an aging neighborhood in need of a boost. Although some of the properties in the vicinity of 708 South Vine could use cosmetic updates, including two properties managed by Green Street Realty, a subsidiary of Mojo. The majority of the homes in the neighborhood are well-maintained and owner-occupied. In closing, please take into consideration the long-term implications of allowing a medium-density residential unit into our neighborhood. Please reject this request.
Thank you. Any questions?
I would like to, I'd like to read from my neighbor. She fell and broke her ankle this evening. So I'd like to read hers. She's at 804 South Vine. I have owned and lived at 804 South Vine for the past 62 years. I know that the history of this area supports the current R3 zoning of 708 South Vine. I believe that the neighborhood would best be served by allowing a single-family or reasonably-sized duplex at 708 South Vine. The current proposal seems too large for the lot of land and will only add to the traffic issues on Vine Street. Please keep the current historical zoning designation in place at 708 South Vine. Thank you, Mary Grace Stevens.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Urbana City Council? Would you like to come forward and state your name and address, and keep your remarks to five minutes, please?
My name is Jan Meyer. I live at 801 South Vine, and this is over what she just spoke about. We moved in 19 years ago, and we took an old Victorian home, which was, well, right now it's about 106 years. So we, it was apartments. We took it and made it into a single-family home. We even found out that at one time, many years ago, it had a wraparound porch. We hired a, someone to do that, and we put the porch back on, making it as my neighbors are doing, back to a neat neighborhood with the old houses. And this, the idea of this property being built, and it just takes away from the neighborhood, sort of the historic part of it. And I just, I'm just totally against it. And just like I said, we've taken a lot of money, a lot of time, restored it, have a big farm wagon in the front yard, picket fence all the way around, just trying to make it a neighborhood. And I just hope that it gets to stay that way.
How did you find out that this was going to be rezoned?
We actually got a letter, and then we went to the zoning meeting that evening where they voted against it. And that's how we knew there was a sign in the yard, which first got my attention, about the public meeting. So kind of raised, you know, I wonder what's going on there.
So they voted it down in the zoning committee?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Somebody also had a petition going, I don't know if they're here or whatever, that had 26 signatures from the neighborhood.
Okay.
I'm not sure, though, who that was.
That was Rob, who is the adjacent property.
Okay. Dennis, did you want to say something?
I have a question.
Okay.
Oh, I'm done.
So, and then, Mayor, I have an input. Yeah, okay. I received, thank you very much, too. I just wanted to add that I received also a letter concerning this property sent to me by Chris Store, and he's the president of the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association. And he wrote on this topic, and he said that HUNA had worked with the city for years to preserve the owner-occupied residential neighborhood in our area. These old but affordable homes require maintenance for upkeep and are valued by the owner occupants. Putting a sideways apartment house in a narrow lot is a disservice to the neighbors, discourages us from performing the work of maintaining our homes, and effectively, it ruins a neighborhood, all for a short-term profit of an absentee landlord who is, has no interest other than the monetary aspects of his construction. Please uphold the neighborhood petition for the HUNA Neighborhood Association goal to preserve our owner-occupied residential neighborhood by rejecting the upzoning and apartment complex. I regret my inability to be present in person this evening because of conflicts. Best regards, Chris Store.
I think the recommendation was to deny it anyway from the Plan Commission, so, but we appreciate you coming. Is there anyone else who'd like to talk with the city council?
Mayor.
Yeah, Heather.
I would like to wish all runners in the marathon on Saturday the best of luck, and I hope that this can become not only the first annual, but the many of annual Illinois marathons. I think it can be great for both cities and for the university, and I hope that we get a nice sunny day.
We could get snow, you never know.
No, no, no. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could add, I'm glad Heather brought this up, because, you know, the public needs to know that this is a great event. We have 8,000 runners coming to this community. It is a party on the streets. Along that route, it's going to be, you know, it's going to get started about 7:30 in the morning. The runners take off at 8 o'clock. We have lots and lots of volunteers involved from the community. It has a huge financial impact, and it's a Boston Marathon qualifying event on a nice flat track. And the weather promises to be nearly ideal. It's going to be fairly cool with low winds, that's the current forecast. So, well, we hope. Anyway, you know, a number of us are volunteering, a number of us have friends and relatives running, but, you know, it's really important we get people out cheering the runners on. But it is a party on the street. It's going to be a little bit noisy in places, and we're just going to, you know, pretend the noise ordinance doesn't exist, right? Everybody? You know, so...
The noise ordinance doesn't apply, I don't think, at that time of day. Next is, I don't believe we have any old business, reports of standing committees, we don't have that, reports of special committees. How about reports of officers? Any reports of officers? Yes, we do have a report of officers. Tom Carino, our Economic Development Director.
Good evening. Everyone should have received an electronic copy of this month's Economic Development Report. In the interest of time, just to hit a few items, construction is nearly complete on the mixed-use office retail building at 901 West University. Very nice project at the corner of University Avenue.
I'm going to jump in. I've gotten already a number of compliments on the quality and design and style and how nice it looks at that corner. Thank you.
Absolutely. It's a beautiful-looking building, and it's been a pleasure to work with the developer and the university related to that project. So that's a great project. As far as the Philo Road area, Philo Road beautification project is ongoing. Construction continues on the Burger King at the former Centrue Bank Building. There is a new restaurant called La Fiesta that's going to be in the former Margarita space. New Heartland Bank is under construction. And then the Chris Creek commercial component related to the development agreement that was the former Kmart building is nearly complete, and they are working with several prospective tenants. The 2009 Market at the Square season begins on May 2nd. So when I present my Economic Development Report to you next month, we will have already had the first Market at the Square event of the season. So that's great. We did receive word that the city was awarded a $7,500 marketing or promotions grant for the Market at the Square. You have before you a brief story by the News Gazette that Lisa Braults wrote a proposal to promote Sprouts at the Market, which is a children's farmers' market program, and the state of Illinois did fund that fully at $7,500. So that's great. The city did attend the WCIA Home and Garden Show at the Assembly Hall on March 30th, and that was very successful. And finally, the city staff is in the process of producing a new television show called Building Urbana. That show airs at 5:00 PM on Sundays on UP That show airs at 5:00 p.m. on Sundays on UP-TV, and I am the host of that television show. So, that's in conjunction with UP-TV and city staff, and we interview... It's a half-hour show where we interview two business owners or developers in Urbana about their business or development projects. So, so far, we've filmed two, and they've aired, and we start filming on our third show this week. So, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Tom. Any other reports of officers? Well, I would like to report that we will be receiving $189,000 under the energy efficiency grants. This is, it'll go directly to the city. This is something that the U.S. Conference of Mayors worked on. It was approved by Congress, but it had never been funded until the stimulus money was appropriated. So, we can use that for some of our sustainability initiatives. Okay, moving on to new business. First is ordinance number 2009-04-026, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2009-02-012 and approving an ordinance authorizing the mayor to establish a parking meter zone on certain streets. This is to add a parking meter zone on Clark Street, and Bill Gray, our Director of Public Works, is here to explain this.
The City Council considered this at the last council meeting. Unfortunately, we had one slight wording change that we needed, rather removing meters that didn't exist, we're adding meters that don't exist. So, if we could consider this amended, or what I would call...
Some of it.
Repealed.
I second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, ordinance number 2009-04-027, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate at 1306 West Dublin Street.
This...
John Schneider is here.
I'm sorry. I thought you were ready. Basically, what this does is conveys the property to Habitat. We have Eileen Gebbie in the audience, who's Executive Director of Habitat, if you have any questions about the things that Habitat has been accomplishing. This property was purchased several years ago using CDBG funds. As part of one of our programs, we support redevelopment by eliminating blight in neighborhoods. And just as a point of reference, Habitat to date has built more than 19 homes in the city of Urbana, primarily in the King School, Woodland Park, and East Water Street neighborhoods. Originally, this lot was slated to be conveyed to Habitat in roughly 2008. We realized there might be some side yard issues, so on April 17, the ZBA granted a minor variance, allowing a reduced setback for the west side. I guess that was in 2007. And major variance was approved by council on May 7, 2007, for east side yard setback. Then we had a little thought about there might be some encroachment from the neighboring structures, so we had a survey done. Now that the survey is completed, we're ready to convey the property to Habitat, so we're gladly answering questions.
Charlie.
I'd like to move the ordinance as well.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Oh, I'm sorry, seconded by Garrick, is that correct? Sorry, Lewis, it was Garrick instead, sorry. Charlie, did you want to comment on this?
Oh, no, no. Yeah, I just, I know we had originally some other ideas for this property, but this seems to be welcomed by the neighborhood and such, so I'm looking forward to seeing its construction. I would urge a number of us to volunteer with Habitat, and I'm going to take this opportunity to point out that there is a bicycle ride to benefit Habitat on Saturday, May 30, which will visit a number of the local Habitat sites. We'll go to Habitat's building in St. Joe as well as Sarantool. You'll have short rides, a 30-miler and a 65-miler if you're a heavy-duty bicyclist, where you can tour where Habitat's been building. So, I know John here is going to be helping out that day. I already volunteered him, so...
I did see this property. I was going down Dublin Street, and it's a very narrow lot. And I'm glad that we've been mowing it, because we didn't violate our own nuisance ordinance. But the gentleman who lives next door says he has a problem with flooding. So, has that been considered? Is that a problem on this site as well?
I don't think it's a problem on this site itself, and I think that in that neighborhood there's some downhill grades that we... Habitat had built a house on the corner, I believe it was 1310, and there were some issues, but they were able to mitigate that to allay the next-door neighbor's problem. So, we anticipate we would treat this in the same manner.
Any other questions? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, ordinance number 2009-04-028, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, Illinois, rezoning of 708 South Vine Street from R3 single and two-family residential to R4 medium-density, multiple-family zoning district. Jeff is here.
Okay. This is a request by Christopher Saunders of Mojo Properties. Mr. Saunders intends to build four townhouse-style, two-bedroom units on the property, so he's requesting a rezoning from R3 to R4, which would allow the multifamily property. The adjacent properties are all zoned R3, single and two-family. The adjacent land uses are single-family homes, a couple duplexes. A lot of the adjacent homes are owner-occupied. The comprehensive plan shows residential urban pattern for this area, and that does allow for single-family homes as well as duplexes and townhomes and other compatible uses where zoning is appropriate. The considerations for a rezoning case, you have to look at development regulations and allowed uses. The allowed uses for this rezoning would, there would be more allowed uses, including multifamily property, dormitories, museums, libraries, things like that. The development regulations would allow it to be developed in a more dense manner. Open space would be less, and the floor area ratio would be more. The site's been vacant since 1980. Mr. Saunders appears to be the third owner since then. I think he acquired the property as part of a multi-property deal. There were some sewer issues mentioned in your packets. Since then, we've talked to Public Works, and it looks like that line was televised at one point. They know there's a lateral that goes towards the property, but they don't know if it's any good. So, it looks like there is at least a lateral heading towards it, which is more than we knew before. Let's see. The Plan Commission reviewed this case. They heard the testimony from petitioners as well as the nearby residents, and they considered the LaSalle criteria. The Plan Commission concluded that while infill is an important goal for the city, this location's not appropriate for multifamily. They voted six ayes to zero nays to recommend denial of the rezoning. Staff concurs with that recommendation. And also, as someone had mentioned previously, there was a valid protest petition submitted to the clerk's office, so it would require a two-thirds majority to pass this ordinance.
Question for Ron. Ron, is the best way to deal with this to just move the ordinance as it's written and then defeat it? If that's, if we want to uphold the zoning board, or the, yeah, the Plan Commission, I mean. Do we just move to deny it?
We could move to deny, and if we voted yes to deny...
We can just move to deny?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. But I just moved to deny the rezoning request.
And I second that.
Okay.
And I want to ask a question, actually.
Okay, that was Charlie Smythe's motion, seconded by Dennis, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. I've got a question, Jeff. So, apparently you found that there was a lateral sewer line that runs from the main to that location. Do we have a history of that lot, having had perhaps a house that was demolished quite a long time ago?
Yes, there was.
So, there was a house there at one time?
Yes, it seems there was a house. There was a fire in the late '70s, and it was demolished in 1980.
Can I comment, too? Okay, well, of course, I agree with the residents, who've been actually wonderfully proactive to maintain the quality of that block. I think that a building that would be built there that was of a higher residential density would be inappropriate. I do realize it's on an arterial street, Vine Street's, you know, kind of a major north and south route in the city, but there are some wonderful homes that are adjacent to that lot. One of them is under currently renovation through the new ownership at, is it 804-6?
806.
806, which is very hopeful, turning an older house around with, that house has good bones. And it would be wonderful to have a more thoughtful structure perhaps built on this lot. So, I'm not against development of the property, but I would encourage the owner to consider staying within the R3 guidelines and considering a duplex rather than a fourplex. And also, I would, I had a question. We don't really have design review in this area, but it is always useful to think about what's been accepted in the city generally. And one of my problems with the plans that I saw, the elevation plans and the layout plans of the blueprint that was proposed, was that while it being a side turn lot, one of the problems is that there's no, there's few windows facing the street, and we prefer to have an entrance or a porch facing the street in a residential area. These are some of the preferences. We were trying to avoid construction where we have a blank wall facing the street and entryways and porches and balconies being, you know, not visible from the street side. These are things that make the development fit into the community's style that already exists on the block, and I think that the developer, as he approaches any final plans he may have, should consider, you know, some of these design elements as being significant to improve the structure even before it's built.
Brandon.
Yeah, thanks, Dennis, for those comments. I agree completely. I'm going to vote yes as well on denying the rezoning. I think, not just because of this building, but because of all the uses that might be allowed with R4, it just, on balance, doesn't make sense for this to be an R4 property when it's surrounded by lesser residential zonings. I also think you're right about the sideways building, Dennis, and the issue of the facade zone and the fact that, well, we have a bay window and another window that are kind of offset, no front door, the building is kind of sideways. There aren't design guidelines here, but I would encourage the owners of the property to do what some folks have done in, for example, in our neighborhood in West Urbana, when they want to build a project, especially when it's constrained like this and is very near the neighbors and on a small lot and are trying to figure out how to fit everything in, to work with the neighbors, to even hold a charrette, you know, and a meeting with the help of community development staff and with the neighbors to talk through what the possibilities are and what they can do to make it the most compatible with the neighbors around them and to get the support of the neighbors. I know there was a church in our neighborhood that was doing an expansion that originally was controversial, but when they decided, let's actually work with the neighbors and build something that's in benefit to the neighborhood, it was a win-win situation for everyone. So, I encourage that kind of charrette and of back and forth and of neighborhood facilitation of this one, because it is an infill project in a close-knit residential neighborhood and a historic neighborhood. So, I'll be voting no on this and hope that there's a lot of attention to what could go here.
Voting yes to me, voting yes?
Voting yes to deny this rezoning, yeah. And I just hope there is a lot of attention, so that we don't get left with an empty lot, but we can eventually get something that adds to the neighborhood rather than subtracting from it.
Heather.
I have a daughter who's a sophomore at Urbana High School, and I take her and pick her up from school, and so I've traveled this area a lot in my lifetime, and I would concur with Dennis and Brandon that this is, from what I can see of the schematics, that it just doesn't fit into the neighborhood. And I also think that we need to realize that the neighbors have gone out, they've gotten signatures, and said, hey, this isn't what we want. And when we have a percentage of neighbors that don't want something like this, I think it would be wrong of us to not acknowledge that, hey, this is our neighborhood, this is where we live and are raising our families. And so, I will, I'll vote, while I support development, I don't support development that doesn't, that the neighbors don't want. So, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Anyone else? I would also suggest, if the developer is here, they might want to consult with Neighbor House. They had difficulty with the neighbors, this is Neighbor House, N-A-B-O-R, which is like co-op of young men on the campus, I believe. And they were able to work things out and come up with a really nice development. So, it is possible to come up with something that everybody's happy with. Okay, we have a motion to deny this zoning request. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion to deny the rezoning carries. Next is ordinance number 2009-04-029, an ordinance approving an amendment to an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement for Ecological Construction Laboratory Super-Energy Efficient Home. Yes, Janelle.
Yeah, Janelle, the home grant coordinator. In January, the Ecological Construction Laboratory submitted a letter requesting additional funds for the 1107 Fairview House. The house is currently built and has been on the market, and they've just let us know that they need additional assistance in getting that house sold. The request was for $15,000 that would bring the price of the home down to $117,000 and assist in getting a Realtor to help get the house sold. The grant staff met with the Home Consortium, which is members from the city of Champaign and Champaign County, to form a recommendation and discuss our options for assisting them. We decided to support funding them additionally and to formulate a plan that would make funds available as soon as possible. The proposed ordinance alters an existing agreement with Ecolab from fiscal year 2007, 2008. That CHODO developer agreement would be changed to increase the number of homes developed from one to two. And that would make funds pretty much available as soon as we get the agreement processed. It would require us at a later time to do an annual action plan amendment to give them funds to do that house, which is currently slated for 901 North Division. But that project can't start until they get this one done. At the March 24, 2000 Meeting of Community Development Commission, the CDC voted to forward this ordinance to the City Council with a recommendation for approval. I'd also like to note that Ecolab had a very interested homebuyer recently, in the past few months, that didn't qualify, because they were about $1,000 over income. And so, but just a few weeks ago, the new 2009 income limits were changed, and she now does qualify. And combined with this proposed amendment, would be able to buy the house almost immediately as soon as we get things processed, and everyone's pretty excited about that. Elise Flaterer from Ecolab is here, if you guys have any questions about this amendment.
Charlie.
I'd like to move approval of ordinance 2009-04-029.
Second.
Okay, that was motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Any other discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes? Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? That motion carries.
Oh, Mir, could I ask a question, actually, right now?
Yes.
All right, I do have a question. Is part of the cost of the house, well, I guess I should start a different way. If we found that the houses on the market are a little expensive, are a little pricey for your average, very low-income person to purchase, is it because of the, is there an additional cost due to the environmental aspects that are added as a plus factor in the construction of the house, as far as materials go, that make these houses just a little bit more expensive than people are able to afford normally?
I believe they are currently, but as Ecolab has discussed even at the CDC meeting, that as they increase basically efficiency of producing these houses, hopefully that cost will go down. And they're currently working out an agreement, I don't know the specifics, with a prefabricator that will be able to do the houses, and that hopefully, again, is going to bring down the price. And as we support them and as they get better at it and as they work with different contractors, that hopefully the price will continue to come down. But at this point, it's, you know, with the additional $15,000, we're not funding significantly more than we are for any of the other CHODOs, you know, so.
I see.
You know, it's a similar amount of funding we're doing for every, you know, new homebuyer project that we're working on.
So basically, we're helping with a discount with all these houses so that people can find them affordable?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
And they will save money on the utilities?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, well, that ordinance did pass. All right, now on to ordinance number 2009-04-030, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2008-03-017 concerning the approval of a major variance, and this is to revise conditions for display frequency, 2710 South Philo Road, I believe this is the Atkins sign. Libby Tyler?
And there's a second case that if you open that, we can address them in omnibus fashion.
Oh, okay. The second one is ordinance number 2009-04-031, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2008-03-018 concerning the approval, excuse me, concerning the approval of a major variance to revise conditions for display color at 2710 South Philo Road. Now, Libby.
Thank you. This might look familiar to you from about a year ago. There were two variances granted to the Atkins Group for the shopping center sign at the pines at Stone Creek Commons. And the variance request hasn't changed, but the conditions are being requested to be changed. And those conditions include, first, the limitation and no other freestanding signs on the property. They would like to reserve the ability to have a second shopping center sign on Philo Road. And this comes from just the experience of having, for example, the Milo's Restaurant and needing motorist direction. So they would like to, the Atkins Group would like to reserve the ability to have a second freestanding sign at that location. And the design of that would be compliant with our zoning ordinance, but is not yet designed at this time as it will need to respond to the tenants' needs. The second change condition has to do with the actual dimensions of the sign, and that's the attachment to the ordinances. And there's an exhibit in your memorandum that shows three different sign types, the first sign being what was approved a year ago, that's about 78.7 square feet, what they're proposing and had hoped to have achieved a year ago, but that was not, were not the dimensions they presented, was 113 square feet. So that's what they're looking for. And then the third would be the allowable sign size, which is 150 square feet, and that's without a directory. So again, the two variances are the 10-second delay that hasn't changed and the multicolored display. This came back to the Zoning Board of Appeals on March 18th, and they recommended by six eyes to one nay for approval of both variances.
Heather?
I'd like to move ordinance number 2009-04-030 and ordinance number 2009-04-031 in omnibus fashion.
Second. Okay. Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Barnes. Mr. Roberts?
I realize that it was suggested that this be treated in omnibus fashion. It doesn't really appeal to me to treat it that way, for one reason. We have, of course, allowed a sign to alter its frequency display to 10 seconds at a time. And I originally opposed that as being too frequent, and I still oppose it as being too frequent, even though this has been accepted by us at a previous time, you know, I was outplayed. But I still feel that flipping every 10 seconds is sort of a gratuitous speed for signage display that is visible from an intersection that's busy. And I am not comfortable, actually, with the proliferation of these digitalized signs in the community because of their brilliance and their high luminosity, especially when we have indirect lighting or we have semi-cloudy conditions in the sky. These signage's are often more brilliant than anything in the visual landscape. I think they can be distracting. I realize that this is going to be a small sign display area within a larger unit, so I feel somewhat comfortable about that. But I think for the purpose of discussion and consistency, I'm going to want to vote against the first amendment ordinance. And if the first amendment ordinance is connected with the second one, I'll be forced to vote against both of them.
I'm trying to remember what our rule is for splitting, when it's one person's enough and that cancels it. Okay, I couldn't remember if it was one or two. Okay, so.
Okay, so can I be recognized?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to move ordinance number 2009-04-030.
Second. Okay, motion by Stevenson, seconded by Barnes. Any other discussion?
Well, just so I understand, this is the one on the, this one allows the size, right?
No, the first one's on frequency.
This one's on the frequency, to revise the.
Display frequency.
What was the frequency that we originally had?
The original, it hasn't changed. In the ordinance, it's three minutes, and because of the special nature of the sign, they're requesting a 10-second frequency.
But they got 10 seconds last year.
That has not changed from last year. Yes, exactly.
Yeah, because the only thing that's really changed is the size of the sign.
Right, this one has to do with the size.
They made a mistake.
Yeah, correct. This one has to do with the size of the sign.
Right.
And it's going to 113, right? And the second ordinance has to do with, no.
You're going to get mixed up, Charlie.
No, it's, the size is actually probably is part of both ordinances because it was attached as an exhibit. So it's a condition to the variance, it's not the actual variance. The variance request has not changed, but the conditions attached to the variance is being asked to be changed.
You know, I don't understand this. I'd like to move to committee. Yeah, I'm confused now.
I would like to try to explain it perhaps better. I know the zoning board also had trouble understanding this.
You know, this is council meeting. I don't think it's appropriate to discuss it and try to figure out. I'd like to move to send this to committee, both these items.
Second. Okay, there's a motion to send both of these ordinances to committee so we can clear up any confusion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
I think the ayes have it. All right, let's move on. Item seven, ordinance number 2009-04-032, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. This is for professional services for the Meyer noise abatement. Libby?
This is a budget ordinance amendment to hire the firm of Paul Schomer and Associates in Champaign to study the noise issues that have been experienced between the neighbors at Lydia Court West and the Meyer loading dock. And we work closely with the neighbors and with Myers to address these concerns. There have been some mitigative strategies that have been implemented, and yet there continue to be some significant noise impacts being experienced. So we're recommending that Schomer and Associates be hired to conduct noise measurements, compare these to the standards set by the Illinois Pollution Control Board, and to recommend some mitigation strategies. The amount we're recommending for the budget amendment is $9,200. This is somewhat in excess of the estimate, but we do want to provide some buffer or cushion and also allow for the consultant to review Meyer's study, should that be necessary. Just in response to some of the comments previously, we will also be following up with zoning ordinance changes. But this particular contract is to address the noise impacts of the loading dock and to recommend strategies to improve that. And as the mayor mentioned, this is, we're uniquely situated here to find internationally-known expert in this area who sits on the committees that set the standards. So that's something that we're fortuitous in finding that local expertise with respect to the plant commission review and how do we come up with these land use compatibility concerns. As I recall, the plant commission did discuss some of these concerns, but that was at a subdivision plat stage. It was not a zoning decision. The zoning is zoned R4, but developed at a lower density. So these are somewhat inherited problems from many years ago that were not anticipated at that time. And we work the best we can with our current ordinance and will work to improve our zoning ordinance, so hopefully we can be better prepared to deal with these land use compatibility issues.
Charlie?
I'd like to move this, but with the understanding or an addendum that it also include Solo Cup issues and also review our own ways that we take measurements with our own, I know that we've got a noise meter of some kind that Jason has. I think it might be also good for him to double-check with the consultant to make sure that he's using it properly, and if other staff need to be trained or review whatever our process is on that. So, you know, how do we make sure that we include these additional aspects in this approval?
Well, this money doesn't cover all that. We'd have to do it in several different steps. Libby?
I think we may be able to get some training possibly from Dr. Schomer. We may be able to get some suggestions on the zoning ordinance, although he's not a zoning expert. We do have in-house zoning expertise in terms of reviewing the Solo Cup situation that will come as a separate proposal and likely a separate budget amendment. But this amount would not be enough to cover the Solo Cup work, we know that for sure.
Well, I want to make sure Solo Cup gets covered, so how do we include?
Well, you can make a separate motion that you want to have Solo Cup be covered. I mean, I've already pushed for that. I think we're going to do it. These are just one step at a time. Two different, separate amendments. We don't know this.
There is a proposal, the last page is a proposal. We're trying to respond to the professional proposal. And the estimate for the Myers site, if you just look in the back of your memorandum, it has a range of up to 8,100, and we're just adding somewhat a little bit of a buffer. And I think that we can ask about some of those questions, but I don't think we can ask for a second analysis, would be my guess for that amount.
There would be separate contracts, Charlie. So we're doing one contract at a time. But you can certainly have a motion to say you want to go ahead with the Solo Cup one, but that would be a separate motion that we're going to come up with a contract and an estimate.
Okay, I'll wait for Dennis and others to speak, and then we'll figure out how to do this.
Well, the reason why I brought the Solo Cup issue and I asked Doug Kessler to come in is because I could tell from the wording of the ordinance that this is a site-specific solution, which, okay, I can totally understand the need for this neighborhood, this very nice neighborhood, to have its issue addressed. However, we've had an issue on Harrell Road that's ongoing for nigh on to five years, which we haven't spent any money on. And I do believe that first come, first served. But we're not following that rule of law in this instance, and so I was hoping that by discussion we could get two things for one. Since we are hiring a consultant, why not have him address two problems within the city, specific problems at locations in the city at this time? Now, I realize that the way the ordinance is written and the proposal that was asked was presented or sent out, the request for response didn't deal with the second site. So I guess my conversation now is how to address that oversight.
I have an idea.
I would suggest that we vote on this one, and then you have a motion to ask the consultant to come up with an estimate for the second work.
I have.
It sounds reasonable, but I keep my ears open.
Charlie, did we already have, we haven't had a motion on this one, right? Okay, Charlie.
Okay, I'd like to move approval of ordinance 2009-04-032 with an additional request, the staff bring us back a second contract to review Solo Cup.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Bowersox?
Yeah, I have a couple more questions about this before we would take action. One of them, I guess, Libby, I'm wondering what the, after we get the recommendations, what some of the possible next steps could be for making these changes and for sharing the cost? I mean, Mr. Schomer, this consultant will come back with some recommendations about, we have to build a wall, we have to add to the berm, we have to put up a physical sound barrier, whatever it is, those could all be expensive changes. And is there some understanding that the developers or the Meyer store operators would participate financially or otherwise in any mitigation strategies or, okay?
You might have a different, you want to go ahead?
No, I was just saying that I felt that to move forward on this, that we should just go ahead and hire the consultant instead of having to negotiate paying for the consultant. But, you know, the solution is another issue, and we're certainly not saying that the city's going to pay for the solution, but we want to know what the solution is. We don't even know what the cost is yet. And we'll obviously have to negotiate about that. But let's just get the show on the road. Libby?
One thing that impressed us about Dr. Schomer is he does work with the industry in finding solutions to meet the state's standards. They do need to meet the state's standards, and there are different routes to success that he will help us. And I will say that the Myers situation is a very different one from the Solo Cup situation in terms of, just from our preliminary analysis, this one is a much easier situation, and we can probably let you know more as we get the reports.
Okay. The only other comment that I have is that I do take to heart a lot of what Chris Alex came and said, that any long-term solutions into how we avoid these kind of conflicts and make sure that developers together don't, you know, don't kind of put the squeeze on land use boundaries right up against each other, and especially on issues like sound and light trespass, are things that certainly we can, in the next four years, work on in our zoning ordinance, improving. I know we've made a lot of headway with signs in a number of other areas in zoning ordinance, big changes, but this is, I think, another we could put more into. So thanks for, this is a good step.
Anyone else? Heather?
Well, I think this is a step in the right direction. I've had conversations with the neighbors at Lydia Court West, and they just want to feel like they are, that their quality of life is what they are paying for. And right now, they're not feeling that way. And so I think that this is, like I said, a step in the right direction, and whatever we can do to work with Meyer, with the developer and the city all working together to bring a cohesive solution is, I think, what is in the best interest of everyone.
Anyone else? Dennis?
If the city will request from the consultant an estimate for work at the Hartle Street Solo Cup location as an addendum or a part of our agreement to pass this.
Solo Cup location as an addendum or a part of our agreement to pass this, I'll support it.
I think that's in the motion.
Okay.
Already in the motion.
That's very good, then.
Any other comments? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smye?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next.
Mayor?
Okay, go ahead.
Having voted on the prevailing side of items five and six on our agenda, I'd like to request to ask a question about an action we took.
Five and six.
Which has to do with the.
Yes, please.
There's a bit of time sensitivity related to this.
Okay.
In with regard to the developer, and just making sure that this would come to next week's committee meeting and then the following council meeting.
I think so.
Otherwise, we could take, otherwise, we could take a break or deal with all the other issues, take a break, and come back and figure this out tonight. I mean, I'm willing to do that, too, but I need, I need to take a moment and step back and look through, through this stuff real quickly and understand a little better, which means I need to reread it again.
I think that would be appreciated by the, by the petitioners.
I would, I would support taking a ten-minute recess after we deal with all the other matters here so that I can re, you know, so that we can reread this material and, and come back and, and then figure it out. That'd be fine with me.
Okay, well, let's just move on then, and we do have a closed session, and maybe after we vote.
Do we need to vote to?
On that, we could have a recess and then come back.
Do we need to vote to do that now, or?
Probably.
Can we take a recess?
Well, we want to, we want to take a recess and then come back and reconsider items five and, no, no, after we're, after the closed session.
Yeah.
Right, okay, before we adjourn then. Okay, we can do it then.
Right. Okay, where are we now? Oh, Kerr Avenue project status. Jeff Angstrom.
Okay, we just wanted to bring this to council for a brief update on where we're at with this project and to seek some direction for future action. As you know, Kerr Avenue is coming on the horizon as the next large housing project the city's working on after the Eath Street, and the Crystal View Town Homes is, I understand, going to be closing soon and under construction very soon. A little brief background, the project came out of a council goal to develop a nationally-recognized model neighborhood that is affordable and uses a fraction of standard energy consumption. We got some design concepts from FAR Associates, and then we moved to phase two to find a developer for the, for the project. We had an RFP, and of the responses, our internal committee selected EcoLab as the project manager. And right now, we have Elise Flatterer is here to give a really brief overview of their response and their project proposal, and I'll go into some more details after that.
Good evening. My name's Elise Flatterer. I'm the assistant director over at EcoLab, and I have a couple visuals to show you of the proposal that we submitted last spring, of the design that we'd like to see going at Kerr Avenue. This is just, most of these are rendered images that our in-house architectural people have done. We specialize in super-energy efficient houses called passive houses, and so all of the designs that we're proposing for these buildings will be certified passive houses when they are constructed. There will be forty-eight units that we're proposing for the site, including freestanding single-family homes, some single-family homes that are attached to a larger building, townhomes, quadplexes, and apartment-style buildings, and then also on the site, part of the site plan proposed by FAR Associates that we would like to continue as well includes green site features such as bio swales, a retention pond, community garden, things of that nature. And this is an image of our site plan. Kerr Avenue is to the top of this image to the north, so you can see the distribution of townhomes and more multifamily, or, single-family and then multifamily units with the one-street access coming in down through the center of the development. And then at the south end, there'll be access to the Crystal View Development nearby via a small access road, so. And then these are just images that we've put together for some of the single-family homes, which will have three bedrooms and two baths, so that's about the size we're going for, same with this one, three to four bedrooms. And the townhomes and the apartments are going to be a little bit smaller, two-to-three-bedroom unit houses, and all the first floors of all of our units that we're proposing will be ADA accessible, and so we're hoping to make this development desirable for as many different types of families as possible. So people have mobility issues and then different sizes of families, and the different sizes of houses, we're hoping will also appeal to people in different economic brackets. So let's just a real quick look at what we proposed last spring.
Question, Charlie, or a comment?
She's done.
I'm done.
Thank you very much. Anybody have a question?
I have a little more discussion.
Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
Thanks, Elise. So since we selected EcoLab last summer, we've been working with them to complete the development team and work on the project. They've put together a great team. They've got, EcoLab will be the project manager and architect, HomeWay Homes will be the builder, Ivicos will do some monitoring, HTC is the engineering firm. Currently, we're working with Devonshire to, they're interested in acting as the developer. We're still in talks with them. If they don't, if we can't secure them, we'll be looking with, speaking with other local developers in the next several weeks. Couple of things about the project. It needs to be reworked a little from what we had originally proposed in the RFP. Couple of things, we're proposing some changes. One thing is, instead of donating the land, we'd like to sell the land to the developer and then put that, put those funds back in as homebuyer assistance, and the reason for that is the land was purchased with the home funds, federal home funds, which requires all the units to be affordable. So if we are able to recapture those funds, the next point is, we'd like to take a mixed-income approach for the project now, like, like we're doing at the Crystal View Town Home site. We think it's a mixed-income project would be more palatable to a potential developer. We're proposing sixty percent of the units to still be affordable, the remaining forty percent to be market rate. That would give some more options for people. Market rate units, for example, could be rented out, so a low-mod income family could purchase a duplex and pay off the mortgage with the income from the other half of the duplex, which is something we're not currently able to do until we get the home funds out. Also, with market rate properties, there'd be more opportunities to make upgrades for things like solar panels or solar hot water to make it more of a zero-carbon development. Those things just aren't feasible in the affordable units, but for market rate units, it's something that people might want and be willing to pay for. Let's see, we, Elise talked about the different sizes. The homes would all be the passive house standard. Some of the things the FAR report had suggested, including renting out granny flats, things like that, the FAR report also recommended that a menu of building construction types be provided, and that's something that's still a possibility to have some modular and some straw bale. Straw bale could be built into a passive house standard, certainly. So for fiscal impacts, currently, the city's put in approximately two-hundred-and-ten-thousand in home funding and one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand in CDVG funding. When we sell the land and recapture those funds, the home funding will go into homebuyer assistance, CDGV can go into infrastructure as an area benefit. EcoLab has identified several grants in the, pro forma, actually passed out and updated pro forma before the meeting. Couple of the numbers of construction costs has come down, actually, so it's looking good. So EcoLab is working on several grants and continue, we're continuing to work with them on identifying more grants for stimulus money or green grants. Next steps, we're going to solidify the development team. After that, we'll draw up a development agreement, and we'll proceed with the final design, and from there, it's just planning approval and construction, probably in phases. At this time, staff is requesting that council direct staff to continue to work with EcoLab to finalize the development team and to identify funding sources for the Kerr Avenue model development. And we can take any questions now.
Charlie?
Well, Elise and others, Jeff, this is really a wonderful, wonderful plan, and I hope we can pull it off, and I'd like to see it pulled off at the, at the full carbon-neutral level, if at all possible, and I see that you're going after the stimulus funds in there. So whatever, whatever help is needed from the city, you know, whatever efforts we can make to try to get those stimulus funds, so we can get that solar, solar component in here would be, you know, really great. It'd be, it'd be wonderful to be able to say that we have the first of this kind of property available in the country. One question I have is on the, on the, you know, you talk about having permeable concrete instead of pavers. I know one of the concerns with permeable concrete is over time, the permeability gets clogged up, and so what's the long-term plan for caring for that permeable concrete? Because I understand it takes some cleaning and vacuuming, literally, to keep it, to keep it porous.
I think that's exactly right. It's every year, it has to be vacuumed up, I think. I'm not sure what the mechanism would be. It would probably be a homeowners' association who would be involved in organizing that.
Okay, yeah, so, so there's, you know, in terms of, you know, in terms of the funding model and the costs and everything that are being figured out here, is a homeowner's fee or a, is the maintenance fee going to be part of the thinking and, and, you know, all that, that people are getting involved in? Okay. Okay, my second question is, if we go to approving the sale of the land so that you can have a more creative marketing of the property and so on, one of the attractions here was the issue of the, I forget the wording of it, you have a collection of families or whatever that might have a group.
Cohousing.
The cohousing, thank you, that's the word. Does that make it easier to do cohousing at this location?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So from, from us, what exactly, what kind of a motion do you need then to, to move forward with, with the changes that you've proposed? Is there a motion here somewhere?
Yeah, under recommendation.
Oh, right here, okay. So you just need a motion from us to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Dennis?
I like the, I don't know if it's feasible because of the variety of styles of construction, but I really rather liked the idea of including a few other types of structures, and I'm really very curious to see if we can get one or two units that are straw bale construction, partly because it's a semi-experimental construction style, and there's not very many examples of it around here. We do have a couple. It has a lot of potential because of its materials being affordable, and I think it'd be great to promote it, at least at one or two of the buildings as a, I think would enhance the educational aspects of this on a kind of a more national level, and it would just give a little more variety to the ecological approach that the city is trying to encourage. So I don't know what the feasibility it is to mix construction styles at the site, but I, I like the idea of having a menu of types of homes that could be built here. So I would encourage that kind of a partnership to be explored as when the development aspects of it come underway, and I don't know if it's possible if you have one developer. I don't know if Devonshire Realty can assimilate, you know, a completely different building style than typically they would do, and I don't know if that means subcontracting one corner of the construction site to somebody who can do the appropriate construction. But if that's possible, I'd suggest we try it.
Robert?
Yes, I appreciate, I was on the original committee, I guess, in terms of what we're trying to look for. What I observed in our meetings and our review is that I didn't, didn't hear you mention geothermal as a possibility. Is that still in the mix as a part of it?
I believe so.
It is an option. We find that with most passive house construction, our energy need is so low that geothermal systems are still oversized, so we would look at geothermal systems only, pretty much on a multi-unit basis to like take care of multiple family units at one time, rather than the traditional single-family, because installing a geothermal unit for each family is overkill. It would just produce too much more energy than we really need because we're reducing our needs so much through the passive house construction. But it's still definitely worth considering, but that's also an active technology, similar to PV panels or solar thermal. That's an additional cost that we can look into to try to achieve carbon neutrality.
And the other area that I saw that was, I thought, I saw the, the images of the various structures, but one of the things that will really allow me to see this come to fruition would be something with very nice curb appeal, utilization of, of different materials, a better look. I know these are just computer-generated, so I'm sure you can, there's plenty of materials out there in the marketplace that you can utilize to differentiate the housing within this complex area that would be very appealing to people visually, and I think, I think that's critical personally.
That's one of the advantages that we see to working with HomeWay Homes, because they do offer different types of finishes and the, you know, for a townhome, you can change the exterior finish for each one, or, you know, we can, that's definitely in our best interest to design them so that they look more single-family rather than just a whole row of like a typical apartment building. And we've seen several precedents done in Germany that way, because most of their passive houses are multifamily townhomes, and they're differentiated, using different materials, and they even try to create like courtyards and yard space so that each family has their own private yard as well, so that's something that we're looking into from a design aspect, too, so we agree.
When will we anticipate seeing something like that? As visuals for us to look over or something?
I guess as we continue to move forward with the approval to, to keep going. Yeah.
Thank you.
Brandon?
Yeah, thanks, Elise. I really support this project, I continue to. It's very exciting. My first request would be the same as Charlie's actually, that as you move forward, making it a carbon-neutral neighborhood, I think, would be a huge step towards making this neighborhood be a model, which was part of the original council goal, was for this to be a model neighborhood. And I think for it to be carbon-neutral would completely change how much interest there would be from people in the region and then the nation into looking at what had been done here at Kerr Avenue. With that said, I don't know, Elise, if you have any... With that said, I don't know, Elise, if you have any rough ideas of the cost of the solar thermal or photovoltaic? I know the numbers weren't in the pro forma, but do you have some sense of even a ballpark of the cost for those systems so that we can all be kind of thinking of, okay, what grants does this line up with, especially with the Economic Recovery Act? There's so many grant opportunities and things floating around. It would be helpful for me to be thinking of a dollar amount that we're trying to find to make this work. Do you happen to know?
Does staff remember from when we talked about that before? I remember that it's been brought up before, but I hesitate to give the wrong number.
Yeah.
And that's something that Katrine would know as well.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to ask a question. Did I understand you correctly to say that the ultra-energy efficient units would only be the market rate ones?
No.
Okay. Because they should all be ultra, right?
We are all, every unit will be passive house certified. The potential, I think, I think maybe where that misunderstanding came in potentially is that by making some of the houses market rate, more people might be able to move in who could fund their own PV system or solar thermal system. Does that make sense?
Okay, I was just interested that they all have the same standard of energy efficiency.
They will all have the same standard of energy efficiency, yes.
Anyone else? Oh, people over on this side. Who was first?
This is really a construction curiosity question. I see that the roofs, I assume, have like pretty much solar collecting panels or something, is that correct, on these layouts? Or is this a rolled roof or something on the top so that the apartments are in building, the buildings, townhomes?
They're designed to be able to take, they'll be at the right, for the maximum angle for solar panels, but...
It's not an automatic aspect of the building that they would have solar panelings?
No.
Okay.
Because they're expensive.
Okay, I see. Well, because I was going to ask how, if you indeed had, had a large unit on the roof, just the upkeep and how to clean them and if they collected, I don't know what they're made out of or if they are, if they would be trapping leaves or something. I guess I'm just kind of, it looked like potentially that if the roof was a solid solar panel, tremendously cool, but it might be hard to clean or do repairs up there, so.
Also, those, that system's pretty much too big.
Too big.
Again, we're reducing our energy costs so much that the advantage to that is our active systems are going to be able to be a lot smaller, more affordable.
You're going with the passive?
Less maintenance.
Aggressive passive, rather than?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Brandon?
Yeah, my, my last question, Elise, and then, and I think I can make a motion here, is about the same issue that Robert Lewis mentioned, actually, that I know over the years as we've looked at the original, you know, the Fairview One and the Fairview Two, one of my pieces of feedback has been that it looked like, like an architect could be more involved to soften the facade and to make it fit in with the other homes on the street, especially those are north-facing, so the, you know, the side of the house in that case that faces the street really is a blank wall mostly to maximize the insulation and the heat transfer issues. But these drawings look like there's, there's a lot more happening, you know, awnings and windows and sort of porches and entryways, but anything you can do to keep an architect involved with the team, I know Doug Farr had some of that same feedback when he was in town and he designed this neighborhood, but anything you can do to keep an architect involved in looking at it to make sure that, that, yeah, we don't end up with a neighborhood that looks like a neighborhood of boxes that landed from space, but a neighborhood of homes and of places people want to be and a neighborhood that fits together coherently, I think will help the marketability and help the interest in the project.
Yeah, we actually have several architects who will be involved. We have some in our office and then the people at HomeAway Homes have in-house architects who will be doing a lot of the construction documents because they have their own special way of constructing the buildings. And then they have their finishes and they'll have their input, I'm sure. And then because of our small capacity, we're either looking to hire more help to help with this project or partner with an additional firm. So there will be plenty, probably maybe even too many architects involved, so.
Yeah, so I would, I would move that, as Jeff said, we, we direct staff to proceed with this, to approve the plan, to work on finalizing the development team.
And does this motion include adjusting the funding model as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The full staff motion.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Close post. That motion carries. The Public Arts Program update.
Good evening. I'm Anna Hochalter, the Public Arts Coordinator, and I have a visual presentation for you to accompany a program report. First, I'd like to recognize Alderman Robert Lewis, who serves on our Public Arts Commission. And also tonight, we have Michelle Plant, who is one of our commission members. And I apologize on behalf of Robin Hall, who's our chair, and he was not able to be here this evening. So I'll, I have a report on the Public Arts Program and I'll focus primarily on the program of work for the current fiscal year 08-09. And first, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the Urbana Public Arts Commission for your support in forming our commission. We're very excited about the programs that Anna's going to discuss tonight, in terms of the cultural and economic opportunities we hope to provide for Urbana residents, businesses, and visitors. So thank you.
Great. So one significant duty of the Public Arts Commission has been to explore and propose programming in the arts. This is following up with the establishment of the program in April 2008. And so tonight, I'll focus mostly on that program. And keep in mind that these programs are in line with the previously approved budget, so we're not asking for additional funding or change to the previously approved budget. So first, I'd like to put us in the context of larger arts programming in, in the country. We are one of 34 Illinois cities that have municipal arts programs or public arts, or arts commissions. The arts industry was recently recognized as an important sector of the economy, especially in this economic hard, this time of economic hardship, and was included in the Recovery Act of 2009. And unfortunately, we aren't eligible to receive portions of the $50 million that were approved to the National Endowment for the Arts because we were not a previously receiving entity of funding from that organization. So we will keep our fingers crossed for next year. The City of Urbana was recognized as an Illinois arts-friendly community in September of 2008. This was designated by the Illinois Arts Alliance and the Illinois Municipal League. And the Gallery District Incentive Program, which has been a very successful program bringing new businesses into downtown, was part of the criteria used in determining that designation. So the Public Arts Commission met for the first time in September 2008 and continues to meet monthly. We have eight, eight members on the commission who are artists, teachers, and administrators from Urbana. They provide great insight and are very diligent. So the, one of the primary activities has been to evaluate the city council goals, the public input received to date, and recommendations passed through the city council from the Public Arts Task Force. So the commission has set priorities for the current year and developed programming with staff to address these areas. So now I'll move on to the program of work. In, the first program is a public arts grant program, and we have four categories of funding. The Here and Now Grant Program, the Envision 365, the Creative Mix, and the Festivals Grant. And the funding for this would be a combination of the Public Arts Projects item through the Public Arts Fund, previously budgeted, and an additional donation made by the Urbana Business Association. We're very thankful that they have dedicated $15,000 this current fiscal year with $5,000 for the next two years, three years, to total to 30 within three years. And this is through a Business Backs the Arts Initiative. So we would be combining those funds to make available $50,000 for Urbana residents who are artists, as well as artists from around the country who would want to do projects in Urbana, as well as groups and ensembles, and for festivals. And this comes from addressing city council goals and the Public Arts recommendations, as well as public input. And we received a lot of proposals, actually, from the public, although we weren't, we weren't really accepting proposals, we were getting them anyway. And it seemed to us that establishing a grant program would be the fairest way to allocate funding for a wide variety of programming throughout the city, primarily the funding through the Public Arts Projects item comes from TIF. And the UVA doesn't have a geographic requirement associated with it, so it would enable projects throughout the entire city. Okay, Philo Road Beautification Art, Beautification Project Public Art Component. We have two confirmed sites on the corridor. One is on the corner of Florida and Philo, and the other is the corner of Colorado and Philo. And we'd be mimicking the Meadowbrook model of using a two-to-three-year loan program. And there's another site that we may be able to use in the middle of that corridor, but the two sites are definitely confirmed. And we hope to put out a call to artists with the next project, which is the Iron Post Courtyard Sculpture Project. So in 2004, I believe, when the, when this area was renovated, there was a site identified to host a sculpture, and that was between the two benches. And there's actually a foundation, and the landscaping crew just this morning uncovered the dirt to ensure the size of the foundation that was actually installed. So we now have the measurements and we propose to, again, put out a call for existing pieces of work that would provide funding to the artists for a loan of two or three years. And we have a goal of installing that piece in June also. The next is to establish an exhibit space within the city hall. You can see the picture on the left is the hallway going from north to south, sorry, south to north, in the city building. And we've identified with the facilities manager some locations on those walls. You can see the bare walls. There it is, okay. Here's, right here and here and here, and there are several locations in the hallway, this direction, as well as the other hallway that's perpendicular to that. And we would be purchasing an installation system similar to the picture on the right, where there are rods that come down from a runner at the ceiling level, and you can have varying sizes. The next program is to continue with the success from last year, where we had a mask-making workshop at the market at the square. And we would like to do monthly workshops, one a month, where artists facilitate the workshops. And in the current fiscal year, there are only two. It would be May and June. So May 30th is the first scheduled date for that. The newspaper, Downtown Newspaper Rack Project is a program, project that we initiated in 2007, trying to address the goal to integrate the arts in infrastructure. So we identified a, an infrastructure problem, which was related to the newspaper racks that are currently on Elm and Broadway. The concern is that they're not securely fastened and they topple over and there are hazards associated with that. So we put out a request for proposals from artists and are working with an artist for this image, which would use historic newspaper images on, within glass or etched into glass, and then have a modular rack unit, which you can see these in various cities throughout the country, but this would be an additional aesthetic feature added to it. And we're working with the Champaign County Courthouse to install it on the front area of the plaza. And this was budgeted in '07-'08. And we hope to have this piece installed in early fall 2009, with fabrication to begin in June. Oh, the fog goes well. The next is the Plaque and Markers Program. This was identified by council as a need and because there were various requests for plaques to commemorate historic and unique features around the city. So the commission discussed the item and has a design to recommend, and staff is doing research on program guidelines, what kind of program would need to have, to be implemented to use this design, and also getting, doing further research on costs associated with this. So we'll be bringing this to your attention at a later date. In the meantime, the Chinese Goose Bridge plaque is on its way. The Friends of the Goose have been working with the city to, to make this design and fabricate the plaque. And you can see the location identified here on Broadway across the bridge. And this is a draft of the plaque. And lastly, we have the Storefront Art Series and the Urbana Space Program. This is a program that connects artists with temporarily vacant spaces for display of visual art. This could be in storefront windows or working with building and safety to see about the possibility of using empty spaces. And further development needs to occur on this item. We have a subcommittee of the commission who's working on this. And lastly, the Martin Luther King Jr. Project Planning Committee is an effort to create a piece of public art that honors the life of Martin Luther King Jr. And we have a, again, a subcommittee working on this. And this would be a collaborative project with the Park District and various citizens' groups and other collaborators throughout the county. But it's in an exploratory phase right now with further details to come. And I must mention that we are positioning ourselves for success. We're partnering with the Urbana Business Association. We work closely with 40 North, 88 West. I continue to serve on the board of 40 North, 88 West, the Champaign County Arts, Culture, and Entertainment Council, and also on a variety of program committees that they have, including the Boneyard Arts Festival, which is April 18th. I must announce, April 16th through 19th is the full festival, and April 18th will focus on downtown Urbana. And there are more venues participating this year than in the past, so be sure not to miss it. And also, I must mention the 175th Birthday Celebration led by Mayor Pressing and Alderman Roberts, who donated the proceeds from the sale of a calendar to contribute to the Public Arts Fund, so we appreciate that. And also, the Urbana Blues Brews and Barbecue Festival in 2009 has offered to donate proceeds from an art fair component of their festival to the Public Arts Fund. So we're working with that to continue with that. We're members of the Illinois Arts Alliance and the International Sculpture Center, as well as the Americans for the Arts. We have a fundraising subcommittee that will continue to pursue additional granting opportunities and partnerships. We, we recently, just a couple days ago, received word that we did not receive funding through our grant for the National Endowment for the Arts. We applied last August, we just received word. We had applied for $30,000, but I'm confident that we're in a much better position for next year, so we will prepare to do that. We will prepare to do that. And finally, we ask that you approve the programs and expenditures that you have before you with any changes that you might have. And I thank you for your time and consideration. Michelle and I are here to help answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Very good display there. Any questions?
Dennis Roberts.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you. I think I was a little skeptical at first about, you know, how this would all work, actually. But the, the programs you're presenting are varied and interesting, and I can see that even, even the art displays and vacant windows downtown, a lot of these things are going to enhance the aesthetic and fun aspect of being in our community, and I think they're... to enhance the aesthetic and fun aspect of being in our community, and I think they're coming along really well. I had a couple of questions, perhaps. I know that you've also been somewhat working on the Ebert plaque. Is that correct? And can I talk about that?
Primarily Rebecca Byrd in the planning vision is working with that.
Okay, so that wasn't something that you were, you were tracking? Okay.
Not so much, but I do know that a plaque has been fabricated and is planning to be installed on Washington Street in front of Mr. Ebert's childhood home.
Mr. Ebert's childhood home, right, okay.
With a celebration in April.
Okay. Pardon me? I saw one a week ago, and I, that's why, that's why, I guess I'm a little confused about that, because I did see a plaque, and it didn't appear in your list, so I just was going to ask about that.
I didn't have a copy of it, so I, I would have moved in.
And some of the other programs that we're going, are going to take a little more energy to fulfill, perhaps, the placement of the sculptures on South Philo Road books, just to see how that works out. I think it's great that you're looking under, for grant material, grant funding, and if you apply again in the future for Humanities, National Endowment for the Arts, and things like that, that's going to be really helpful to us. So just, I just congratulate you on a good, what I would call a good start.
Thank you.
Brandon.
Yeah, maybe, first I'll start out with a motion to approve the program and expenditures.
Second? Okay. Motion by Bowers-Sachs, seconded by Lewis.
And then you had also asked for suggestions, so my one suggestion, and I'm, I'm totally excited, this is really great, so as Dennis said, congratulations. My one suggestion is one I got, I heard, and that made a lot of sense to me, which was to consider shortening the Here and Now Grant Application, which is your smallest grant, the $200, up to $1,500 grant application. In looking at it, it is a long application, and if I'm asking for $200 or even $1,500 for something, it seems like I shouldn't have to fill out as much as if I'm asking for the large grant for the festival, you know, the $10,000 grant. I could understand, we got to have a lot of documentation if you're asking for a large sum of money to put on a whole festival. But for the really small grants, to make them easy enough that it's worth an artist's time, otherwise I'm worried that, you know, if somebody isn't going to apply for $200 or $500, if they have to fill out as much documentation as for larger grants. So that's just a suggestion, I didn't have any specific, you know, strike this question, strike that question. I, I can say it's been the trend, as I've seen in my work writing grants, to have, to not overburden the grant selection committee, which will be you all, with huge submissions, but to instead give word limits and ask for really short initial grants in an initial round, and then the ones when you winnow down the list, you can say, okay, well, now give us your budget, or now give us your other materials. But to make the first round of submissions really short, so that you can get a quick sense of what the project is and whether it fits the program. So that's a suggestion as you move ahead and finalize some of these documents, but I'm really excited to see the grants hit the street and to fund some of these great art activities. So thank you.
Charlie.
Running out of steam here, so real quickly, I've got a smart, smart alecky comment, which is, I hope that the newspaper rack distribution thing can be retrofit for electronic display of newspapers.
[laughing]
Concerned about where that's going, you know, with LEDs, right?
Mine is a space heater.
Right, yeah. I, it looks like you've got a great start here on proving the skeptics wrong, so I wish you a lot of luck with that, I'm looking forward to seeing this. And finally, I did get a suggestion from a constituent on a project, and I'll get that to you. Remind me, please, later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
We've got fiber coming underneath it.
And maybe a rain garden, too. But anyway, any other comments? Any other comments on this? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we go into closed session for the purpose of property acquisition pursuant to Section Five, the Illinois Consolidated Statutes, 120 over 2, C5.
Ms. Barnes.
With regard to the prior two items that we put on, that we deferred till next week, the individual who is for those, who is representing came back. So she's here. So would, would the, would the group entertain a, a, well, I think, I would like the opportunity to just kind of explain it, and see if you think we can get it.
Okay.
How about that?
Okay, so move to reconsider our motion.
Yes, I want to move to reconsider, and, and then bring it back to the table.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. We're good.
Move to reconsider, and...
Yes.
Okay, would you like to come up and answer any questions?
Yeah, but I can kind of...
Well, we should, we should take a vote. Move to reconsider the motion to go to close, or motion to send this to committee.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
In this situation, if you'll recall, we, we did approve, of course, the variants, and we approved the 10-second flip. What's happened is, is that, I mean, just in a nutshell, is that I think there was just some miscommunication with their vendor, and what came back was a little bit bigger sign, okay? And so the, the sign is actually not that much bigger, it's just this much bigger. But because the flips and the signs are two separate things, and the sign is bigger, we have to approve the flip again, again, because the sign's bigger. So that's really all it is.
Okay, that's, okay, that's, okay. Okay.
Right.
Okay.
So, so, so it's, so let's go ahead and do them separately, because that, that meets Dennis's need.
Aye.
But, but allows us to move this forward, so that they can really facilitate their business.
Which one of these two ordinances is the permission to do the second sign? Or is that part of both?
That's, that's part of both of them.
It's part of both. Part of both.
Okay, that's a concern I, okay, so let me ask my question then of staff. How big is the second sign going to be, or is it the same as this one?
The second sign hasn't been designed yet.
Could it be up to the full 150, then?
It would have to meet zoning ordinance, which we are looking at an amendment, primarily dealing with height and monument style.
Okay, so...
But the second sign could be 150 square feet, and if there's a directory, it could be 200 square feet if it's a shopping center sign.
Okay, could, you know, how, you know, this is my biggest concern here, is not so much the, the size, I'm fine with the, with the larger size, I'm fine with the timing. I'm concerned with how big the second sign can be, and I would like to see us limit the second sign to be no bigger than the size of this sign. And I don't know what, but I don't know what the zoning changes are going to be. I mean, you could turn around tomorrow and, and file for a huge sign out there, which I think would be really inappropriate, and that's what I'm, I'm interested in avoiding.
I think you could alter, I think it's condition four.
Both recommend, from both of them?
While we're looking at that, I have a question. Lynn, while we're looking at that, could we ask the petitioner if they are aware of what kind of sign they're going to be doing, or at all, or any close...
No, we would like the most flexibility that we could have, because the sign will be dictated more by the type of tenants that we get in some of the other spaces in those buildings that'll be in the Philo frontage. Obviously, we would not put up some sign that was not fitting with the rest of the center. I mean, we've spent a lot of money and time to create a center that, that would be an attribute to the community, and that people would want to go and shop at, so we would not put up something that would look, not fit in with the rest of it. But we really don't know what size of sign, or what type of sign at this point that we would do, to be honest.
Dennis.
Okay, I don't understand that comment. My, yeah, let me, let me, see, let me see if I can understand what has happened so far. Were you approved a sign, a certain kind of a sign? And it's been built, and it arrived, and it's a little bit bigger than we expected, all right? But it's not very much bigger.
Right.
Therefore, okay, this, this, this ordinance is to approve that new sign, because it's a little different than the one we originally approved. Now, there's the question to have a second sign farther down the road. Now, it seems to me that we would expect them to match, not only in size, but in general shape and in display area, because we're, we're being told that the reason why it's being requested is because there's a particular need to direct traffic farther down the road, and there's a particular address, which is, I don't know if it's Monocle Pizzas, or the other, it's Milo's Restaurant.
Milo's, and as, as we build more buildings in front of it, it will be even more difficult to see Milo's.
But since, but since part of the aspect of the new sign is that it's going to have a revolving display panel, and however, even if you get 200 new tenants, everybody will have their fair time and share. So there should not be a question about, what, what I would suggest is that the City Council approve a second sign to match the one that got delivered, even though it's a little bit bigger than before. And we shouldn't necessarily suggest that there be larger signs, because they're farther down the road.
Could we not, could you not necessarily say to match the existing one? Because there's nothing to say that the second sign will be a digital display.
Right.
I mean...
How about just, no bigger than, no bigger in size than the...
In mass.
I think, I mean, if...
So, so you're willing to...
That's the best we can do.
So, so you're willing to design two completely different signs for this location?
Well, they, they'd have some similar aspects, but yes, they, they might be, I mean, we, we just, it's...
So you don't know what the second sign looks like yet?
No.
Well, then we shouldn't probably approve a second sign tonight.
Lynn, would, would it be appropriate, and would you be, if we brought back the second sign, when you know more what's going to be on it? If that, you know, if that, I don't want that, I don't want the second sign to hold up what you want to do here. But I think that, I mean, I'm willing to approve a, I'm willing to approve a second sign tonight. I, you guys have great design elements, and I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but I'm just wanting to know again about timing of that second sign, if that's a problem. I, I don't know.
Heather?
From what I, what I can understand is the second sign is a component of both of these ordinances, correct? And so, first of all, I want to know what Atkins, what the Atkins Group has done, and that is phenomenal development at the pines. It looks beautiful, and I think that we need to show the Atkins Group and the neighboring, the neighbors there that we support that area of the, of the city of Urbana. And, and I would support a second sign, because that's going to get more people into Milo's and potentially more businesses in the empty storefronts that we have right now. So what I would like to see is that we move both of these with the recommendation for approval.
Just approval, as a council. I have a question. You know, the, the original request, I understood, was a mistake. And now you're saying that the manufacturer did it not the way you wanted it. And so the original concern about changing this was that it was, you know, 48% bigger or whatever, and then we went and looked at the sign, and it didn't seem like it was that big. So was, was the original submission incorrect, or was there a miscommunication between you and the manufacturer?
The wrong attachment got submitted with the application. And when we, originally, we set a sign similar to the one that was on the exhibit, and staff measured it and put 78.5 square feet. And then when we went and signed the contract for the sign, and they submitted the application to the city for the permit, the city called me and said, we can't grant the permit. And I said, well, it's the sign that was on the attachment. And they said, no, the sign is bigger. So it was a human mistake, that, you know...
I mean, I was concerned from the beginning that you wouldn't have a sign on Philo Road. So I think it's perfectly reasonable that you have a sign on Philo Road. Brandon?
Yeah, I am going to support the variances as written, including the second sign, a by right sign, so it could be 150. I think our sign ordinance change that Libby mentioned is, is a good change, and hopefully that'll encourage more monument signs over time. And I don't know if this second sign will come before that's in effect or not. I know that goes to maybe Plan Commission at the end of, at the end of April, and so we'll see it at some point, that sign ordinance change. But to me, the biggest issue is, is what the mayor said, that some sign on Philo Road, I think, makes logical sense, but also that if you hadn't gone through this at all, if none of us had had this case, I think you would be allowed six signs by right, each up to 150 square feet, which is something like 900 square feet of total signage by right.
Correct.
So, plus directories, I guess, if there were directories on some of the signs. So saying that we're going to limit it at two, and that one of them, the first one will be 113, and the other will be up to 150, is still a lot less than what we would get with a by right development if we'd never gone down any of this road at all. It's a lot less than six signs, and I think two signs is reasonable. I think from the start, I've said this was an experiment to see about the multicolor issues and the frequency issues, and I feel like it's not perfect, probably on both sides, we've given a lot, but I'm willing to approve it this way, and to go ahead with that experiment, and to see how these signs work out.
I'd like to move approval of 2009-04-03-0.
Second.
Is there any discussion, any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No, for the reasons I stated earlier.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Mayor. Ms. Barnes?
I'd like to move approval of ordinance number 2009-04-03-1.
Second.
Okay, motion by Barnes, seconded by Stevenson. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
I, I have no trouble with the concept of this middle sign here, okay? It's a nice monument sign in the spirit of what we are trying to get to. And I think one of the issues here is, is that our, our sign ordinance is in the process of being revised. We've got the Menards Development, the Walmart stuff is all being done in conformance with that, and, and in that spirit, spirit, we were moving towards this kind of requirement. So I think it's important that we limit the second sign, which I have no problem with the second sign, that we limit the second sign to be no bigger than this, keeping in, in, in the monument spirit. So I would offer an amendment to the fourth criteria in this ordinance, the fourth one being that the, that the pines shall be limited to a total of two freestanding shopping center signs, and locations should be limited areas of lots 201 and 208, in the common subdivision as depicted in subdivision plat, and then I would add the sentence, and this is my proposed amendment, neither sign shall exceed 114 square feet in area. So I'd move that amendment.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
I'd like to suggest that, you know, as a developer's, you know, getting more tenants, that it might be possible that that sign might need to be 120 square feet, or 140 square feet. And I think for us to limit it to the 113 isn't necessary, and we need to promote and assist the developer in filling these spots and getting people in those doors. I think the developer is very wise and savvy in terms of what looks good, and I can't imagine that they will prob, that they would put out a huge sign that, you know, is not fitting with the, with what they've done so far, because, and they are planning a monument sign as the second sign, correct? So that's covered, and that's good. But the exact size, I think we can leave within our current ordinance.
Heather Stevenson?
Well, I'd like to piggyback on what Brandon has already stated, and that is, by right, the Atkins Group could have six signs, and all totaling a huge amount of square feet, and because they know what, what is aesthetically pleasing, have decided not to do that, and that is why I can't vote, that I couldn't vote for that amendment. I just, I, I see the, the way it's written now is fine.
Charlie?
I'll let Dennis go first.
Dennis, go ahead.
All right. Well, so far, the Atkins Group is just asking us for two signs. Well, I have no problem with two signs. Well, I have no problem with two signs. Um, I, I can live with the, uh, district voted upon, faster dial, uh, faster digital display. Uh, we've already accepted it once. Okay, we're just basically saying, okay, it's still okay. I have a problem with that, but, you know, I'm overruled, and then I'm just a one person here. Um, to accept a second sign that, that we don't really know quite what it looks like except for it's going to be a monument sign, I, I do trust your aesthetic judgment, basically, but I'm still not going to just sign off on something I haven't seen yet. I think that's, that's irresponsible for a city council. And, and, um, uh, how large it should be, um, if the original sign that you requested was smaller than the one that got delivered, that seemed to suit the needs that you perceived of for the corner. And if you want to have a second sign, it seemed like it would be appropriate to have it similar. Uh, I assumed that you were going to actually do it identical, but actually now I hear that you're not. The second sign's going to have different, um, different appearance.
Well, no, it may be similar. We just don't know at this time.
It just hasn't been drafted yet.
Right. And, and we don't, you know...
Well, let's do one sign at a time, I suggest. But, you know, when, when it's drafted and we know what it looks like, we'd be happy to vote on it.
Um, I, I would like, just as a point of clarification, that when they came to us, it's because they asked for a variance. But what they're asking for, the second sign, fits in with our existing ordinance.
Right.
So it's not... So that's the distinction here.
Okay.
Um, Robert Lewis?
Is it, by right, they can have the sign the larger size, is that correct? And that's if we go with everything we've got at this point, what they have now, and we go and say, you know, whatever the sign may be in the future, it can, its maximum size is 150 square feet, whatever our ordinance says at this point, right? But they still have not exceeded the, the parameters with the signage.
Correct.
So I don't understand the issue to, you know, concern yourself, if they're by right, have the capability of going there, why would you want to limit, limit them in developing a sign that they have a right to make? I don't understand that.
Okay.
Uh, I think you were next, David.
Well, it's, uh, just yesterday, I was, uh, going to Milo's for the first time. And, uh, if it weren't for that small, uh, temporary sign that they have, I would have, you know, ended up in Vladivostok. Uh, I, I think that... Yeah, I would, yeah, 24,000 miles later, yes. Um, and, uh, so, uh, I, I, having seen the development, it looks like there's been a, a great exercise of design restraint through the, the whole area. But at the same time, you need a certain amount of visibility next to the roadway. Otherwise, you know, you'll be joining me in Vladivostok. So, uh, I, I don't have an objection at all to a second sign, uh, designed under current ordinances as they stand.
Charlie?
My point is that our ordinances are in the process of changing. We're trying to move to monument signs. We've got monument signs already out there. We've got monument signs in our other developments. And so what's coming in the next month, month or two, you know, we, we might have already been here. If we'd moved, you know, had a little more staff and gotten this done a little faster, we, we wouldn't even be having this discussion because there, the new, the new ordinances would take, be, be taken in place. My concern is not so much with the square area. Maybe I should be talking about height or square area, square foot area and height. You know, there's a lot of difference between this sign, which is 17 feet high, and this one, which is 25 or 30 feet high. And that's my concern here. Yeah, it may look like a monument sign, but if it's 30 foot high, it's not a monument sign in my, it's not in the, it's a monument. Yeah, yeah, good point. So what I'd like to do is, is as we consider this, uh, I'd, I'd like to, Libby, to indicate what, what's coming down the pike and what I'm trying to get to. And why, why, to me, it's important to the second sign have some kind of a limit that, that is in conformance with what, what the ordinance coming down, uh, coming from plan commission, uh, will look like. So if Libby could explain what's coming, I'd appreciate it.
We've, um, set the hearing for this Thursday, but we've asked the plant commission to continue it to April 23rd. And, um, I did an analysis of what the staff recommended changes would be as they would impact the Filo Road sign. And this would apply regardless of the ordinance tonight because the zoning ordinance is proposed to be changed. And if it does change, according to the staff recommendation, the sign would be required to be monument style. It couldn't be a pole sign. Uh, it would still have the square footage allowance, uh, which is 150 square feet, but with the bonus for a directory. And I, I don't know if they would go to that design or not. Um, the biggest change is going to be in the height. And our staff recommendation is that it could be placed closer to the property line than currently. And if it's placed between eight and 15 feet of the property line, it can only be eight feet tall. So that's about half as tall. But if they place it further back, they can, um, go up to 16 feet beyond that 15-foot setback. So the, um, this proposed sign is just a little over 17 feet. So under the new zoning rules, it would be somewhat shorter. Um, and it, again, could go up with this design, it could go up to 150 square feet. And then in terms of the message board, the electronic portion, if there were to be one here, we don't know that. Uh, we are proposing that we allow multicolor, um, but that we keep the change to one per three minutes, and that we also continue to prohibit animation or scrolling. But we are, the staff is recommending that, um, not be restricted just to mono, monotone.
So if I could follow up then. Libby, what you're saying to me there is that this second sign, regardless of what we, you know, if we just allow a second sign tonight, the second sign will have to conform to whatever comes from plan commission because it's already started? This, these changes have already begun to our ordinance, so whatever, they, they couldn't tomorrow file and say, "We're going to do a, a 30-foot whatever sign"?
I really doubt it takes, it would take time. Um, I don't think that's really a possibility. I suppose somebody could rush and get a big tall sign, but, um, we're not anticipating that that's going to be happening. We'd like to get input on the sign ordinance as well, but we think it'll make for nicer looking, um, retail areas. And the reason we're looking at bringing them closer to the roadways is, we did studies on visibility, and we did review industry documentation on what the signage industry is recommending. So it's, it's aesthetic improvements, but also some industry improvements.
So it would be to the developer's advantage to actually work with staff with this new ordinance then? You know, I'd, I'd be perfectly comfortable if the, if the developer would basically say that, you know, she'll work with the new ordinance on the second sign. And I'd be, you know, I'd walk away, I'd withdraw my, my amendment. Uh, I mean, that, that, that makes a lot more sense. I don't know how, I don't know, you, you probably can't commit the developers to that, but, but that's where I'm trying to go with this, is I want to see, I want to see your, your new signs conform to the general monument sign stuff that we're moving to. That's, that's my, my goal here.
Well, I don't, we wouldn't make a sign any taller. I mean, we'd be willing to go the same height as the existing sign that is going to go at the corner of Filo and Windsor.
17 feet?
Yes. Don't know exactly what that's going to look like. It'll have some components of that sign. It'll have the red thing. It'll have the pines logo probably. But whether it has a message board or something else, we don't know yet. And, and that's, that's all I can honestly tell you at this time.
I, I'd like to call a question on the amendment.
Did you want to withdraw the amendment, Charlie, or...
Trying to think of a better way of phrasing the amendment.
Questions, I call.
Yeah.
Do you want to repeat it then again for us, Charlie?
Oh, the, uh, the, I'm just repeating what the amendment is. The amendment is, sets a, a, uh, limit of 114 square feet for the second sign. No. No. So, so, no, defeat the, defeat the amendment, and I'll, I'll propose a better one.
All those in favor of the amendment by Charlie, seconded by Dennis, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Nay.
Well, I guess that one goes down in flames.
I have a...
Okay, now...
I have a, a new amendment I'd like to propose.
Mr. Smythe?
Okay, I'd like to move that, uh, we amend this, this section four here to, to, uh, limit, uh, the second sign to, uh, the height of the first sign or, uh, to be in conformance with, uh, new si, uh, zoning sign ordinance as it comes from plan commission. Give them an option of maximum height of 17.2, which is the current sign, and, and other existing limits that would occur. Uh, or that they choose to, uh, conform to new ordinance, uh, as it comes from plan commission and approved by us.
Then I'll say, I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor? Whoops, another comment. Mr. Bowersaw?
Yeah, if I can ask a question, just so, I want to make sure I understand that so I can decide how to vote. It sounds like that's kind of a grandfather clause then. So even, say they don't build the second sign right away, and five years from now, they say, "Oh, it's time to build the second sign." They could come and say, "We want it to be 17-point-whatever feet," like the first sign, regardless of what our sign ordinance five years from now might have changed.
Yeah, I guess, I guess maybe, let's see, they could, maybe the better way to phrase this, I'll maybe reword my ordinance. 17.2, if they want to do it between now and whenever this ordinance is ready, once the new ordinance is ready, um, the previous, the 7.2 limit is off the table.
Let's go. Are you able with the second?
Yeah, yeah, but I have a question for you.
Mr. Roberts?
Since, since we haven't passed the second ordinance, is it really, can we actually bind them to something that hasn't been drafted yet?
It, it's an amendment to the second ordinance. Yes, it's fine.
All right.
I think what he means by second ordinance is the new sign ordinance, don't you?
The new...
Oh.
The new sign parameter.
Yeah.
What this says is that they can, if they want to proceed right now, they can do a new sign that's within our current, uh, square footage limits, no, no higher than 17.2 feet. Okay? Or, once the new ordinance is there, the 17, 17.2 no longer exists, and there's, and their new sign, whatever it is, has to conform to the new zoning ordinance, new sign zon, zone ordinance. It basically just gives them, it, it provides us a guarantee that the second sign won't be taller than the current sign that they're going to be putting up. That's all. And after that, the new zoning applies. The new sign ordinance applies.
Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Lewis?
Didn't you just say that the criteria that you established in the new ordinance was predicated on its relationship to the street and relative to height as you proceed inward for sightline?
What we're recommending would be eight feet.
Um, from eight to 15 feet in setback. After 15 feet, it goes up to 16.
So, Ellen?
Any other questions on this amendment? Mr. Bowersaw?
I guess my only remaining question is, is one for Libby and one for Jane. It's just, is that, is that clear enough first to you, Libby? Do you know how to administer that variance as stated?
I, I think I understand. I, I think the timing will be such that the second sign will come under whatever the new ordinance is, but this provides protection in the interim.
Yeah, I think, like you said, the timing practicality probably is that the new sign would come under the new ordinance in any case. And so then Jane, sort of the same question. Did, did that make sense? And you'd kind of said that the second sign probably wouldn't be taller than the first...
What doesn't make sense to me is, we approved the one amendment that said, that gives us a second sign and doesn't stipulate anything regarding this size of it or anything. And now the second one, so which takes precedent? The first variance...
I, I think detailed things take precedence over more general things.
Pardon me?
I think detailed things take more precedence over, take precedence over more general things. Is that correct? Mr. Garrick?
If, if necessary, we could reconsider the reconsideration. But, uh, I, I, I think that, um, I, I'm not convinced that we're, we're trying to protect ourselves against, uh, anything that it's, that's anywhere close to actual. My, 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 my problem is that, you know, that, um, it, it seems like this is the, the sort of thing that would make someone not want to sit in the chair that you're sitting in because we're trying to decide whether or not, uh, we, um, grant you what it is we're supposed to be granting you by right anyway. So, uh, I would, I would not support any amendment. I would say, let's, let's pass these two ordinances as written.
I'd like to call a question.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
No.
Okay, that amendment fails. Now, back to the original motion by Barnes, seconded by Stevenson. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Smythe?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, we're going to go back to, um, would you like to make a motion, Charlie?
Yes, I'd like to move into closed session for the purpose of property acquisition issues pursuant to five Illinois consolidated statutes, 120 over 2C5.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?